Hi, everybody. Welcome. I'm Kate. I work here at the Schaumburg Township District Library, and I'm so glad that you've joined us tonight. When the League of Women Voters reached out to us along with the Delta Sigma Theta sorority to ask if we would do this forum with them, we were thrilled to say yes because as a public library, it is our goal to give you access to information, and we know that's so important when it comes to participating in civic life. And we also know that the League always does a stellar job of running a fair and nonpartisan forum with their amazing guidelines and rules. So before I hand it over to them, just a few housekeeping items. If you have not silenced your cellphones yet, now is a good time to do that. If anyone needs the restroom, it is out any of these doors to your left along the back wall of the library. And with that, I will hand it over to Kathy Cortez with the League.
Good evening and welcome. As Kate just said, I am Kathy Cortez, and I'm co-president of the League of Women Voters of the Palatine Area. We service pretty much all of the area that District 211 covers, and so we're very happy to be here to share this event with you this evening. The League of Women Voters, as you probably know, is a nonpartisan but political organization. We do not support, oppose, or endorse any candidates. In fact, the candidates tonight will speak for themselves and not on behalf of the League, and the League does not fact-check during a forum. Tonight, we have no open discussion from the audience. Our questions have already been vetted in advance. Those of you who took the time to register online are aware that you were asked for your input at that time. So we took that input, and we worked with really a group of League members that hit pretty much the entire spectrum of the political spectrum and vetted the questions to make sure that there was no bias or partisanism involved in those, and we prioritized them based on the input that we got. However, any questions that were deemed to be negative or those that were directed at one candidate or any subset of candidates were eliminated for tonight's event. Before we formally get started and introduce the moderator today, I too want to say a huge thank you to the Schaumburg Library for helping us host this and host the registration. They're a great community partner to work with, and we're always grateful for them. Also, we're extremely grateful to the Delta Sigma Theta sorority. They are an organization that has helped us with forums in the past. They're incorporated as a 501(c)(7) nonpartisan organization, and like us, they don't endorse candidates or political parties. So they're a wonderful partner for us who serves the community, and we are, again, happy to have them with us and helping us out tonight. And so without further ado, I'm pleased to introduce our moderator for today's forum, Lisa Slanker. She's a member of the League of Women Voters of Arlington Heights, and Lisa's been a trained League moderator. She's done lots of moderating, and it's wonderful, so we're very excited to have her tonight, and I will hand it over. Thank you.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here to moderate this candidate forum. As a resident of Arlington Heights, I'm not eligible to vote in this race, so I have been asked to serve as an impartial facilitator for this discussion. Let me take a few minutes to explain the format and the rules for the forum. Some questions for the candidates were submitted by the audience when they registered. Others came from the candidates themselves or from local nonpartisan organizations. All questions have been vetted to represent the topics of interest to this particular audience, and every effort has been made to word each question in a neutral, nonpartisan manner that will allow every candidate to present themselves in the best possible light. All of the candidates have agreed to abide by the following ground rules. Candidates have drawn number to determine speaking order. The moderator will rotate this order. Each candidate will answer each question. Each candidate will have one minute for their opening statement. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. The moderator will repeat the question if necessary. If needed, a rebuttal may be requested. Each candidate may use a maximum of two rebuttals during this forum. Rebuttals will be timed and limited to 30 seconds each. At the end, each candidate will have a one-minute closing statement. Here in the front row are the timers from the League and Delta Sigma Theta. Candidates will be given a 30-second and a 15-second warning. Please quickly complete your thoughts before you see the stop card. Bright red, easy to see. Time limits will be enforced out of respect for all candidates. Candidates have been asked not to interrupt one another. We also ask you, the audience, to behave in a courteous and respectful manner. Please hold your applause till the end of the forum. Anyone booing or heckling the candidates will be asked to leave. With a field this size, we do not have time to deal with disruptions. Please remember that each of these candidates are your neighbors. They have devoted enormous amounts of time and effort and sometimes money in their effort to represent your community. They deserve our gratitude and respect regardless of their viewpoint on issues. Today's forum will be recorded for League of Women Voters' use in educating the public. A video of this forum will be available early next week on the League of Women Voters of the Palatine Area website and the Schaumburg Township District Library website. The candidates have agreed to this. No voice, image, or other duplication of the forum may be used by a candidate's representative or campaign in any campaign advertising. The League of Women Voters claims copyright ownership over all recordings of transcripts produced from this event and reserves the right to publicize this forum. To view this forum, please go to the League website, www.lwpalatinearea.org, or the Schaumburg Library website. Today, we have 11 candidates vying for four four-year seats on the District 211 School Board. Oh, yeah. Oh, please silence your phones if you haven't already. With us today on the ballot are Jane Russell, Joan Cheryl, Mark Kramer, Aiden Brands, Kimberly Cavell, Peter Dombrowski, Stephen Rosenblum, Meenal Dwan, and Michelle Baron. Susan Sam and Marbra Velez are unable to be with us today. They have each submitted a statement that will be read at the end of today's forum before the other candidates present their closing statements. We will begin with the one-minute opening statements. By number drawn, candidate Cheryl will go first.
Thank you. My name again. I think I have a bad. Okay. Are we good now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Joan Cheryl. I'm a proud parent. I have 30 years' experience in the education and training field. I've worked as faculty in administration. I've worked in public, private, and parochial schools, and I understand the industry as well as its influencers. Much of my career has also been spent outside of education. I built a very successful small business, and I've worked in corporate management and training. I'm running as a moderate, representing what I call the exhausted middle. I'm not affiliated with or taking any donations from unions or PACs. I'm here to offer those voters who are also frustrated with outside influences as an option. My experience makes me very qualified. I'm passionate about education, and I'm here to represent you. I can understand all stakeholder perspectives, and I want to help the community move forward together. Please, if you'd like to find out more about my qualifications, my website.
Thank you. Candidate Dwan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Meenal Dwan, and I'm a proud member of this community for over a decade, and I have three children going to the school district here. I have a background in medicine, having graduated from men's school, and I have served as an educator for half a decade. I've worked at a successful healthcare company as well before going into finance. I believe that education is one of the most critical factors in shaping the future of our communities, and I'm passionate about ensuring that our children receive the best possible education in a safe and nurturing environment regardless of their socioeconomic background, their race, ethnicity, gender orientation, or sexual orientation. I also believe that it is essential to foster strong relationships between the school board, parents, and the community. As a member of the school board, I will work to ensure that there is open and transparent communication between the board and the community. I will listen to your concerns and create policies that reflect the needs and values of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Baron.
Thank you so much for the Schaumburg Library and the League of Women Voters and also the Schaumburg Hockney States Alumni Chapter of the Oxford. I can hear you. All right, there we go. Sorry for putting this forum together, and thank you so much for those in the audience joining us tonight and those who will be watching recording later tonight. My name is Michelle Baron. I'm a first-generation college graduate. I'm a mom of two. I have a beautiful eight-month-old who is crawling all over the place now and a beautiful 14-year-old who will be a Hockney States alum next year, like her father and I were. I have lived in the community for over 20 years, and I'm currently working at Connecticut Center where I oversee and monitor a $2 million budget, and I have also provided support to District 211 and all districts in the area regarding the student wellness, parent education, and also providing youth leadership opportunities for youth in District 211. When elected for District 211 School Board, I will continue on being fiscally responsible, focus on students' safety wellness as well, so I appreciate your vote on the way forward.
Thank you. Candidate Rosenblum.
Thank you. Thank you to the organization for putting out this program this evening and calling you for coming. My name is Stephen Rosenblum, and I'm running to retain my seat on the District 211 Board of Education. I was appointed to the board in 2017 and elected to my seat in 2019. Both of my children graduated from Schaumburg High School, and both my wife and daughter teach in District 54. I'm an HR professional with a sense of experience in leading and working with others as well as teaching at the collegiate level. Currently Vice President of the Board of Education, I've been very involved in the governance of the district, interacting with and listening to constituents across our area, and serving as a leader in our community and schools. For the last five and a half years, I've had great pleasure in dealing with experience, insight, and other things representing every member of our community, and I'm running to do just that and keep our districts one of the best in the area through fiscal responsibility, educational program quality and availability, student staff wellness and safety, and supporting our students in their preparation for careers in college. I look forward to speaking with you further tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Dombrowski.
Thank you to the Schaumburg Township Library, the League of Women Voters, and Delta Sigma Theta for hosting the forum tonight. I am Peter Dombrowski. I'm a father of three. I'm a structural engineer. My vision for D21 is threefold: improve our academic performance and have District 211 ranked in the top 25 school districts in Illinois; improve two-way communications with everyone; and improve our fiscal practices. At the end of the day, we take money out of your pocket that does not get spent. I seek your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Brands.
Well, first, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight. I'd like to begin by addressing probably what a lot of you are thinking. I'm the youngest person to ever be on this stage. At 19, I decided to make the life-changing decision to run for public office because I really love this community. I've grown up in it my entire life, and I have a unique perspective that the other candidates don't have. I'm here to advocate for the most important people in our district, the students, and I'm just here to serve the community. Throughout the span of this campaign, I've experienced numerous instances of discrimination, harassment, and threats, but despite that, I'm a strong young man, and I should not be underestimated and treated differently due to my age. I actually think my age is my biggest strength. I'm excited to share my appeal with all of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kramer.
Good evening, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for organizing and producing this important forum. It's a shining example of democracy in action. Many of you know me. Most of you know of me, so I'm going to skip my bio. It's out on the Friday. You can see it on my website. Mark Kramer, an incumbent Board of Education member running for reelection. Why would anybody want to do that, you might ask? Good question. It's because the issues are large and are at the core of our Palatine Schaumburg Township communities. It's where we send our money and, most importantly, our children. Our expectations are high. Parents demand participation in their students' education, but believe their voices are not being heard or the questions unanswered fairly. I'll stop at there in the instance of time.
Thank you. Candidate Cavell.
Just a... Okay. Everybody can agree. Thank you to everyone for organizing the forum and reiterate gratitude expressed here by the other candidates. My name's Kimberly Cavell, and I'm running for reelection after first being elected in 2019. I'm running for three reasons. One, I would like to prioritize our students' mental health, which goes hand-in-hand with student safety. To me, those two are inextricably linked, and a twofold prioritization for district resources should be focused on that, especially in the mental health crisis that young people and, I argue, a lot of us adults are experiencing across the country in a rise of antisocial behavior. Secondly, I'd like to continue the financial responsibility of the district and the stewardship that we've been providing. And thirdfold is to make sure that we provide robust and challenging, high-quality academic achievement programs for all students who walk through our doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Russell.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Delta Sigma Theta for having this forum this evening. I'm a resident of Rowley Meadows. I raised my family there. I have twins who attended the local public schools. My newest journey is being grandmother to a six-week-old grandson. I'm a retired chemistry teacher and department chair, having taught in West Suburban High School for 34 years. Why do I want to run? I'm retired mostly, and now I have the time to devote to this important and significant office. I greatly appreciate the schools and the impact of good schools on the community. I believe I have a unique set of qualifications, being from the education community. I have worn many hats and multiple roles in order to affect positive change in Illinois to educate all of our students. I have served on federal, state, and local education committees. As a result, I believe I have much to offer to the district as a board member.
Thank you. Okay, now let's move on to the questions. Candidate Dwan will have the first question. I'm going to read it, and I will read it again if you need it, but hopefully that won't happen so we can get through more questions today. So question number one. How should the school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden? Candidate Dwan.
I believe you get what you pay for, and District 211 offers high standards of education as well as countless opportunities to our students. However, the board must also keep in mind that due to recent pandemic, there has been a lot of challenges for our community. Not all of them... Most of them come from a lower socioeconomic background and have difficulties. Having said that, I would like to see a moderation in tax levies rather than going extreme. We have always been a debt-free school district, and I would like to continue that. So whatever it takes to keep us debt-free so that every dollar goes towards our education and improving our facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Baron, same question.
Thank you. So I'm a product of District 211, and I have been through the District 15 and District 211 education system, and it has been the most wonderful experience as a previous high school student, and I'm excited for my daughter to also be attending District 211 soon because of the quality of education that we provide our students, and that is done through our taxpayers' money as well. So there needs to be a perfect balance between how much our taxpayers pay, because, yes, we all come from working families, and it is important to keep that balance. It's also important to make capital improvements to invest in our students in that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Rosenblum.
Thank you. So one thing to remember is every member of the school board is also a taxpayer. So we're experiencing oftentimes the same tax burdens as everyone else across our community. A couple of things. One is, as was mentioned, we are a debt-free school district. Being debt-free actually saves the taxpayers' money and allows us to fully utilize the tax money that we do receive as revenue, which comes to about 85% of the revenue of our school district. So most importantly regarding that money is how we use it, and I think it's very important that we are very fiscally astute and in tune and careful on how we spend the taxpayers' money. And I think as a school board, over the last five and a half years, we've been doing a great job of that, and we continue to make sure our schools stay as top-notch as they are around maintenance and student school programs and using that money to take care of our students and make sure they're very well-educated and with the pandemic that we are experiencing and have experienced, making sure that they have the right counselors and services, also utilizing the money that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Dombrowski.
Yes. Thank you for that question. We should have been debt-free a lot sooner. When I came on the board in 2015, we had a $26 million bond issuance for life safety programs while sitting on 74% reserves. That didn't make sense. Why should you and I, as taxpayers, pay interest on bonds when we have money sitting in our reserves not working for us? We had a five-year strategic plan. We had 60 acres of land that was doing nothing for anyone. We pushed, and we got that removed. We had an higher MFA deficit of $20 million while sitting on several tens of millions of dollars in our reserves. We brought that down, and now we have a 63% asset position in our IMRA funds. Our committees were open. The public could come in, and up until the change of the board two years ago, those committees became closed. We didn't have the dialogue with the community that we have now, and we need to continue. We had $15 million in surplus last budget and $11 million the prior year. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Brands.
Well, thank you. So again, like I said, I graduated from Palatine High School last year, and I could tell you the inside of it is beautiful. Your tax dollars are going to fund like these amazing schools within our district. But I will agree with Mr. Dombrowski with the fact that we don't need to raise our taxes. Like recently, the board voted on a recent tax levy, and if I were on the board, I would have voted no for that because our district is debt-free, and we do have a lot of cash reserves. So I would say we should spend that money first before we charge the taxpayers, and it's not my intention to want to burden any taxpayer.
Thank you. Candidate Kramer.
Yeah, well, District 211 has a good and great reputation. There are several challenges that the Board of Directors must educate in a timely manner, and I want to tie resource to this. Our reserves average around 50% and rising to approximately right now 65%. That's a lot of money. I say use it or abate it to correct some of the issues that are out there that we need to talk about, and I'll get to those later.
Thank you. Candidate Cavell.
So my first priority when I think about balancing financial issues is making sure that individual homeowners like yourselves and myself don't pay for the property tax breaks of corporations like Target and Bridgestone Fire. So I think they should have to pay their property taxes just like the rest of us. I don't think they go a special path, and that's a separate vote, and without going into the inside baseball of it, that's important to me, which reduces our overall property tax levy, by the way, on individuals. Secondly, I do think we need to balance the need to keep affordable housing, and our communities want to be able to afford to live here. You know, I'm not interested in turning Schaumburg or Palatine into San Francisco, and at the same time, the families that send us their students expect there not to be program cuts and reduce opportunities for the kids that we actually serve. So there needs to be a balancing act, and due to recently changed laws regarding the property tax levy, we can take advantage of that.
Thank you. Candidate Russell.
So I have lived in the community probably close to 50 years, and we moved here specifically and stayed here because of the great schools. And I believe that the board has done an excellent job in taking care of having a quality education for all of our students, for all of our students. And then secondly, I am now retired. I pay taxes in the community. I'm keenly aware of being on a fixed income, as many people are, and so it's important that we are very financially responsible. I think the board has done an excellent job in doing so for the time that I've been in the community. I hope that I can help and make sure that that continues.
Thank you. And last, candidate Cheryl.
Thank you. District 211 schools, I think, are a great deal for parents, especially if we have multiple children in the district. I do think that we need to be sensitive to those who don't have children but pay the same taxes that we do have children in the system do. I agree with the others. I think it's time for the board and the administration to come up with a plan to spend down the reserves to a level that maintains operating flexibility while minimizing any kind of tax increases. District 211 spends less per student than most of our surrounding school districts. That tells me that we can... We probably can't make too many cuts without affecting quality. I believe that our district should pay as we go, so we shouldn't take out debt to pay for today's students, and likewise, we shouldn't collect more property taxes than we need to run high-quality and efficient schools.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to question number two, and we'll start with candidate Baron. What would be your ideal process for approving a great, appropriate mathematics or science curriculum that is recommended by staff? Candidate Baron.
Thank you. As far as curriculum goes, our curriculum is vetted and designed by our experts in our district, which is our teachers, and I have legal self-respect for our teachers and their expertise, and it's important now with pandemic, it significantly impacted our students the most in the sense of not only their mental wellness, but also their academics have suffered because of virtual learning. So making sure that we get our students back to previous years in mathematics and English. Our district is doing quite far compared to the state better, but there is definitely always a firm improvement, so making sure that we have the curriculum put in place to meet the needs of all our students, so all our students can be meeting the standards of our state and later on using that in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Rosenblum.
Thank you. The Board of Education is responsible for reviewing and approving recommended curriculum updates and changes. While there are processes in great lengths of reviews that go into the identification and selection of curriculum for our schools and our students, I believe such decisions for inclusion or exclusion for those recommendations are best made by our highly educated teaching staff, those who have the expertise and leadership responsibilities for this. Recommendations requiring board action are summarized and provided to the members. Once recommended with supporting information, we as a board can then make educated decisions to approve or not approve them. So I believe in leaving that in the hands of the professionals.
Thank you. Candidate Dombrowski.
Yes, thank you for the question. I had actually requested that the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Dr. Schumacher, provide all of the recommendations to the board two weeks ahead so that I could actually read some of the recommendations and have the proper time to prepare. As far as math curriculum goes, my process would be to review that curriculum and also seek input from teachers that may not be part of that curriculum committee. The teachers I've spoken to weren't even aware that some of these committee meetings take place when it comes to recommending material. Additionally, a lot of these votes for curriculum recommendation that comes out of the planning committees are 7-0, 10-0. They're all unanimous votes, so you don't get the other side of the story with what is going on with the curriculum, what the pros and cons are, what the deficiencies might be in that material. So I would seek that out, and I would try to get additional input, not to undermine the committees, but just to get a better, broader perspective of some of the challenges that might arise.
Thank you. Candidate Brands.
Thank you for that question. I would take the guidance in crafting a curriculum from the experts, our teaching experts. They know what's best for our students, and in regards to creating a curriculum, we need to prepare our students for their futures, and we need to provide them with knowledge that will prepare them for their future endeavors. So that's just my concern. We need to prepare our students for the future.
Thank you. Candidate Kramer.
The curriculum is one of the major responsibilities of the school board. The school board owns the curriculum. We don't... We don't manufacture the curriculum. We don't recommend changes. We only vote on them. So I think we need to understand that. There is a robust process to review the curriculum three times a year by department heads, experienced professionals who make recommendations to the board and the board votes on it. Okay, that that's really how the process works. I will agree with Mr. Dombrowski that, and there are times that I am not sure that I'm getting both sides of the story, both pro and con, from the administration, through the teachers who make those recommendations to us.
Thank you. Candidate Kettle.
I'm not going to repeat what other, as a sitting board member, have said about the existing process, so I appreciate you giving that logistical information for everybody here. So instead, I'll talk a little bit about how I believe effective board members and effective boards together collectively execute oversight over curriculum. And so I believe our influence over the curriculum design, which as Ms. Baron said, we do in-house, is to really set very high expectations that we, so our teachers know exactly where the bar is, so they can strive to meet it when they design the curriculum. So four questions really that board members need to ask. One, do students achieve the actual targets? Does our curriculum meet state and national standards? Are they adequately prepared for the future? And is the curriculum relevant to every student who is subject to it? So those are the questions that form the basis for oversight. And then when the curriculum is not going well or meeting those qualifications, the board needs to set new direction in an open session in front of the community. So we're all on the same page.
Thank you. Candidate Russell.
So as a teacher and a department chair who has been involved in writing curriculum for years, and not only for science, but for other departments in the school district, I think it's really important that teacher and administrative input is the most important thing here. The board is to monitor progress and performance. The board delegates its authority, the superintendent and staff to pursue the work that is to be done. And I believe that if the board wants to redo staff work, this actually disempowers the staff.
Thank you. Candidate Cheryl.
Yeah, I agree with what many of the other candidates have said about, we need to, as a board, to provide oversight and provide input and the general direction of curriculum, but really it's the teachers who are the experts and we should defer to them. As an instructional designer, I have created hundreds of curriculum. And one thing I think, when the question was directed towards math, I think it's really important that we also involve businesses and colleges for practical decisions on what we need to offer. For instance, U of I has done a comparison of students who took AP Calculus versus Statistics. And a lot of kids take AP Calculus just because they think it'll help get them into college. And what the U of I study found is that there was no significant difference between freshmen and sophomore grades and students that weren't enrolled in engineering. And so I think getting that outside input is really important because sometimes, you know, when you're in a school, you just kind of see what other schools are doing, but you don't have that outside information.
Thank you. Candidate DeWan.
I believe the role of the board is to make sure that the curriculum is up to the state and national standards. I believe educators are the experts and they are the ones who need to design the curriculum. It's our, as a, as board, as a board member, it's our job just to make sure that it is up to the state and federal standards. Also, the curriculum should promote multiple perspectives and student, and give students a high standard of education. And I think our curriculum already does that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for question number three, we're going to begin with candidate Rosenblum. And the question is, reflecting on the last question, how would your ideal process change, if at all, for a book or curriculum about sex education or history? Candidate Rosenblum.
So thank you. As a fellow community member and school board member, I regularly seek out and listen to all parts of our district community for experiences, expertise, perspectives, and interests, although some people may not think I do. This includes from students, parents, residents, business owners, legislators, law enforcement officers, teachers, and staff. It's important to make sure that our curriculum is available for all students to be able to participate, partake, and learn from it. If, for instance, there's, there's controversy with regards to any particular curriculum, there are certain curriculums, including sex ed, that allow parents the choice to opt their students out of that particular curriculum and have an alternative lesson taught to them during that time. So there are options available for people. And if a parent is interested in learning more about curriculum, they also have the opportunity to come in and learn about them.
Thank you. Candidate Dombrowski.
So for this process, like I said, I would be looking for pros and cons as far as what some of the limitations of the curriculum might be, how it's, how it's implemented to reach goals. Currently, our curriculum is provided to supplement and expand on what we have, but we don't necessarily get a syllabus. We don't see how this plugs in. We don't see if we have curriculum that should provide measurable improvements. Less than 50% of 211 students are less than proficient in English, language arts, and math. So we need to look at that and focus on that academic improvement and how the curriculum will get there. As far as history, sex ed, we adopted the national standards of the board level before we had seen any detailed curriculum. There's still questions as far as what material will be presented to students that have chosen to opt out, where they'll be located in the building, how that all will be facilitated. And the district has already made a commitment.
Thank you. Candidate Brands. Can you repeat the question? Certainly. Reflecting on the last question, how would your ideal process change, if at all, for a book or curriculum about sex education or history?
So with the whole book thing, I own a book publishing company, so I'm, I'm very pro book. I would never want to ban a book. And about the sex ed, I am very for the sex ed. We should teach our students about it because I believe if we don't, that's depriving our students of knowledgeable information and something that they'll need for the future. So those are two things that I'm very for. And I would, you'll never see me ban a book or want to get rid of sex ed. And with the whole thing with history, we need to teach kids history. We can't beat around the bush. We need to give everyone the straight facts, what the true history of this country and this world is because it will provide our students with knowledge to excel in their futures.
Thank you. Candidate Kramer.
Yeah, let me answer that question directly. The curriculum process works, it's robust, there probably could be some tweaking. The community can get involved. We just rewrote a couple of policies which describes that process. It's long and it's involved. Ultimately, if, if the community registers, registers a complaint, it doesn't have to be a parent about a particular curriculum or a particular textbook or some sort of thing, that complaint goes through a process. And eventually, if the, if the complainer wants, doesn't want to stop the complaint if they're convinced that they were wrong, that comes again to a board decision. The theme here is it's a board decision, seven people vote on it, and that's why we have elections.
Thank you. Candidate Kettle.
I do not believe in creating a special process anytime a church, activist group, or political party gets upset about a book or curriculum. If we have a process that we have relied upon, discussed in open session, and voted upon, then that process exists and should exist for all our curriculum review. It is not a good enough excuse for me to say, oh, the Democrats don't like this curriculum, or the Republicans are upset about this book, or this church is uncomfortable about this thing. And so then we have to change the process and accommodate their discomfort. I do not believe that that is the right thing to do. I believe the process should stand in. If we say it's fair for math or English, then that process should be the same for every other subject that we have curriculum from.
Thank you. Candidate Russell.
I'm not sure that I can add a lot more to what has been said, other than I don't believe the process should be changed either. The board connects with the community and with the entire community. And effective community engagement is essential to creating the trust and support among the community, the board, the superintendent, and staff. So if the board is in touch with the community-wide concerns and values that are being served, then it is for the broad public good rather than any special interest groups that might choose to try to influence that change.
Thank you. Candidate Cheryl.
Again, I, I agree with most of the candidates here. You know, I think that decisions need to be made according to pre-reviewed, by peer review. I'm not an expert in any of these topics. So really, this needs to be based on science, social science, not cultures or religious views. I think opt out is important, but it's also important that students can access the information that they need. You know, I think that we have to make sure that we teach a full and accurate history. And, you know, history is really, it's, it's not telling what happened or what, what is, is what we understand about what happened at that moment in time. And that changes. You know, we might find some information later than we did know before, and then that's included in the curriculum. So it's not something that's stagnant.
Thank you. Candidate DeWan.
I believe the curriculum process should not change, be it sex ed or history or any of these sensitive topics that do not appeal to a smaller group. Curriculum is designed for the entire community, not just for a particular section of society or community. Sex ed is something that we, we, we did, we did implement the new curriculum, I'm sorry, we didn't implement the new curriculum and it was for the good of the whole community. And obviously, like everybody else mentioned, there's an option of opting out if you don't want your child to learn about it. The same with, I mean, with history, we learn from history. We cannot rewrite it, but we can definitely learn from it and be better at things that were done wrong in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Baron.
Thank you. So as far as our process, I believe our process is right where it needs to be. So there needs to be no change to our process. Like you said, our teachers are the experts in putting forth the curriculum and also the supplemental materials. Our curriculum is changing every so often, you know, with then just making sure that if they're not meeting the standards, then we need to review and reassess and change either the curriculum or the supplemental materials given to our students. But we should also not only focus on the math and English. Yes, it is important, but we should also be teaching our students life skills, which District 211 provides well-versed, different, you know, academics, not just focusing on math and English, just to prepare students for just life in general after high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Kramer, you have 30 seconds for rebuttal.
Yes, with respect to process, there is a policy that, that the incumbents on this board that are at this table voted on. It's IIAA. It specifically addresses the process by which community members can complain about the curriculum. Believe it or not, it was six one. I actually voted against it. I think everybody else voted for it because I thought, I thought the process was too cumbersome on parents in the community.
Thank you. We'll now move on to question number four, which will begin with candidate Dombrowski. Question is, what is your position on the proposed legislation for schools to hire a lobbyist to advocate for the affected schools regarding the prepared, proposed VAERS development? Candidate Dombrowski.
I voted for lobbyists.
Thank you. I guess we have your answer. Okay, next is candidate Brands.
Well, I thank you for that question. Well, I think it's a good thing that the VAERS are coming here. I think this is something we need to proceed with caution because this is something that's never been done with a school board hiring a lobbyist regarding a football team. This is just, like I said, it's unprecedented territory and your tax dollars are going into this. So what I think with this whole thing, we need to be transparent. The board needs to be transparent and we need to know exactly how much we're spending on this lobbyist because we don't, we don't know what's happening in Springfield. We're not there. So that's just my concern, transparency, and we don't know what's going down in Springfield.
Thank you. Candidate Kramer.
Yeah, and in general, I agree with Mr. Brands. I voted yes for the lobbyist with reservations. This is a lobbyist and my stipulation is that the board be intimately involved in working with the administration and the lobbyists to understand what they're doing. I don't have that commitment yet, and I think we need.
Thank you. Candidate Kettle.
I also voted to supply polos for my, my going in and out regardless. I also voted to approve the hiring of the lobbyist. I think it would have been a deliric, dereliction of board member duty as a steward of the community resources not to hire a lobbyist and have a seat at the table for such a profound potential change to our community. I certainly support in broad terms economic development of our community, absolutely. I just don't support it at the expense of students or taxpayers. So I'm glad to have a lobbyist. I'm, like everything else in life, skeptical but curious, and we'll see how, how this process unfolds in Springfield.
Thank you. Candidate Russell.
So I'm a resident of Rolling Meadows, as I said, and Rolling Meadows was along the racetrack, and so I've heard nothing about Rolling Meadows being involved. I think it was an excellent resolution for the school board to hire a lobbyist. And the adage bits here, if you're not at the table, you could well be on the menu.
Thank you. Candidate Cheryl.
Well, I don't think you need to worry because Rolling Meadows is part of District 214 who we're partnering with, and so you're covered. And I think it's great that the three districts in the area all pulled together and took the initiative to partner together. To me, it's kind of a no-brainer. Something this big, we've got to have, you know, we've got to be involved in it. And our district needs to keep our finger on the pulse of the legislation that could have a huge effect on our district's finances for years to come. So I'm a yes.
Thank you. Candidate DeWan.
Ultimately, the Arlington Heights property will bring massive amounts of economic development to our area. In partnership with District 214, 215, District 211 needs to be at the table for discussions so that we can ensure we are prepared for such growth. I think hiring a lobbyist was a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Baron.
Thank you. I also agree with the other candidates on this forum as far as meeting lobbyists to ensure that our best, the district's best interest is at the table with along District 214 and District 15 as well. It's important, it's amazing that the VAERS are coming so close to town, but it's also important that we ensure that it's not going to be a burden on our community as well. And at the end of the result, our students are going to suffer whatever this legislation is coming from, so ensuring that this lobbyist has the best interest of our students.
Thank you. Candidate Rosenblum.
So I, I quote District Dombrowski, I also voted in favor of hiring a lobbyist at our, at our last board meeting. But I encourage everybody to take a look at our, last month, we had two board meetings. We had a regular and a special. The special was because of the delay in approving the lobbyist because some members of the board wanted additional information, which sounded great to me, and I voted in favor of delaying it until we had an idea of who the lobbyist was going to be and were able to do some due diligence around that to make sure that we were, although partnering with 214 and District 15, that it was the right lobbyist for our district because that's where our priorities are, right? And fortunately, we were able to take advantage of that, join those districts and can as a group. We are going to have a seat at the table. We're going to make sure that we're well informed. I'm not so sure about intimate involvement in what the lobbyist is doing, but certainly regular communication and updates, which we've been promised we're going to be getting from that person or that organization to keep us updated and make sure our district is well taken care of.
Thank you. All right. The next question will begin with candidate Brands, and it is, if elected, what role of any would your religious and nonreligious belief systems play in policy? what role, if any, would your religious and nonreligious belief systems play in policymaking?
Well, I do have my own religious beliefs, but I'm going to keep those beliefs separate from the school board because church and state should be separate.
Thank you. Candidate Kramer.
I agree.
Okay. Candidate Kettle.
I agree. Church and state should be separate. It's an issue I feel very passionately about. I'm a Unitarian Universalist, and the faith, the system of ethics that I subscribe to itself is centered around, is centered, is centered around the separation of church. He's still offering you. Is centered around the separation of church and state, so I heartily agree.
Thank you. Candidate Russell.
Ditto.
All right, this one's going fast. Candidate Cheryl.
Okay. I think the elephant in the room is that there's a church that's putting out flyers about, aimed at our LGBTQ students, and it needs to be addressed. I support the changes to these LGBTQ inclusion topics and sex ed, and here's why. Eighty-five percent of these kids consider committing suicide. I'm not an expert on this community, and I don't know, but I do know that they're suffering, and I do know that I want these kids to live. I'm also Christian. I Tatawana. I send my son to a Christian college. My faith leads me to err on the side of compassion and inclusion. My faith guides me, but I do not seek to impose that on my neighbors. As a parent, I want control over the religious messages that my children receive, either implicitly or explicitly. I also don't think we can talk about improving mental health when we're choosing to exclude this group, and it has such a negative impact on them. And as my pastor says, when you're standing with people, when people are throwing stones at them, and you don't get hit, then maybe you're not standing close enough.
Thank you. Candidate Dwan.
I believe church and state should be separate. Religion is a very personal thing, and I think it should stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Baron.
I agree with my other candidates. Definitely, there is no room for personal religious beliefs for any school board member to have. It is something that I do believe in my own beliefs, but there's no room for my own religious beliefs to be part of my decision-making as a board member. As far as LGBTQ students, I'm very much an advocate for LGBTQ students and making sure that we create an inclusive environment for all our students coming into the doors and making sure that we're preparing our students with all the mental health resources as well in order to combat this mental health issue and struggle that is going on globally and making sure our students have those resources. So yes, I do not believe there's any room for any religious beliefs on the school board.
Thank you. Candidate Rosenblum.
So Rosenblum probably tells a lot of people what my religious background is, although people tell me that I've had that name my whole life, so, but I'd rather turn this around so my religious belief does not come into play, my personal beliefs do not come into play in making decisions as a school board member, nor will it. However, I want to turn this around to diversity. We have a very diverse community, diverse religions, ethnic groups, ages, countries of origin, et cetera. And what I have done since joining this board is make sure that our school district takes those diversities into consideration when scheduling programs, extracurricular activities, tests, days off, early days, institute days for our staff, and those types of things. And what I've done is look at the diversity of the community and try to take that into consideration with how we do business. And I will continue to do that and continue to push that awareness as we elect.
Thank you. And candidate Dombrowski.
Yes, thank you. I've been raised my whole life as a Catholic. I'm proud of my faith. And from my early days in kindergarten at the Catholic school, the nuns implemented discipline, they also implemented the golden rule. And I think that everything I do has a little bit of empathy in it because of the religion that was instilled in me early on. Kindness, compassion, beatitudes, all of those shape who I am, and it doesn't allow me to isolate myself from other people when I need to consider decisions that have an impact. So fundamentally, I think, yes, subconsciously, there are a lot of elements of my religion that goes into my decision-making process, but I don't believe that is a bad thing.
Thank you. All right, so the next question will begin with candidate Kramer. And it is, what proposals do you have for addressing any current or future shortage of teachers and/or teaching assistance in the district? Candidate Kramer.
Well, you pay a lot of money, that's a fact, and we've been generous with the raises, and that includes not only the teachers but also the support staff. We're going through a negotiation right now with one element of the support staff, and I think it's going in the right way. Do we have shortages right now? I don't think so. If so, it may be minimal, but manageable.
Thank you. Candidate Kettle.
So obviously, the teacher shortage is nationwide, and it does affect District 211, actually. We do have shortages in several areas. I talk to Dr. Small about this regularly because it's a concern of mine. So in terms of talking about the teacher shortage, one, we need to keep the teachers we already have. Mr. Kramer spoke to the generosity of salaries, which is part, piece of that, but it's not the whole piece. If, for example, a church succeeds in getting their preferred candidates to have a majority on this board and declares war on our teachers, especially without state-level political support and goes it alone, our teachers have very little reason to stay. That won't be successful in terms of teacher retention, so we need to treat the teachers that we have well, and we need to keep the ones that we have. We also have to be very proactive and creative with recruitment, especially with encouraging our own students to think about education as a career and welcoming them with open arms as certified employees in the future.
Thank you. Candidate Russell.
So I actually serve on a state committee now. I'm one of the co-chairs, and through the Deputy Governor of Education Initiative, we are working on the teacher pipeline. So we are actually looking at state initiatives to recruit, train, and retain teachers. We hope to have some proposed legislation that would be available this spring in order to incentivize. I also am serving on a steering committee for developing a geographic information system. Very interesting because that way we can actually identify areas in the state that need additional help. We have looked at particularly shortages in special education teachers and English language, and also for teachers of color.
Thank you. Candidate Cheryl.
Thank you. You know, I think that there's always been a lack of understanding that teachers are professionals and that anyone can walk into a classroom and be effective. So I think first, just respect for teachers. I agree that who, this upcoming board is going to have a big impact on whether or not District 211 is going to be a desirable place to work. We can either choose to be a desirable place to work, that doesn't mean enabling, or a district that makes the teachers feel attacked or micromanaged. On the flip side, now is a really good time to be going out there and trying to recruit because teachers are being attacked all over the country. There may be teachers that are ready to leave their districts, and if we can provide the right environment, it may be a great time to be out there recruiting. So I think really, you know, we have to decide what kind of district we want to be, one that good teachers want to come to or one that they want to flee from.
Thank you. Candidate Dwan.
So District 211 has had a very high retention rate for all teachers up till now. That's why we can provide the education that District 211 does provide. Recently, I just found out that this Palata High School teachers put in a two-week notice in the middle of the school year, which tells us how much stress they are going through, and maybe that's one of the pointers that we need to take better care of our teachers moving forward. So far, we have done good, but that doesn't mean we'll continue doing good and regaining good teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Baron.
Thank you. According to our alumni report card, our teacher retention is ninety-six point four percent versus eighty-seven point six of the state. It is important, salary is a big deciding factor for some of our teachers, but not only salary, but the environment that we have our teachers in is also very important. So taking a look at our environment, is it, are we providing enough resources to our teachers? Are we providing enough support? Are we providing enough teachers aid? It's also something that is important when teachers are making a decision on what district to come to. I have immense, utmost respect for our teachers. I would not be here, you know, if it wasn't for our teachers in our school district. So, yeah, and it warms my heart hearing teachers that come back to our district and teach, and it just reiterates how good our district is for alumni to come back and teach in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Rosenblum.
So thanks to this question, recruiting is my specialty when it comes to community resources. We really need to be able to identify, attract, and develop our staff. So from an attraction perspective, I already have some ideas, and I think our teachers do too. So I think we can expand college relations, recruiting with current schools and adding even more. I think we should look at having a referral bonus for our good teachers to refer good teachers as an additional source. And I also think we can utilize our existing staff to help network out of the community. I also think, as Ms. Baron had mentioned, it is very humbling and powerful when I go into some of our schools and find teachers there who graduated from our schools, and they've come back and now they're working in our schools. I'd like to encourage our existing students who may be having an interest in education to pursue that interest and partner with them through their college experience and ventureships.
Thank you. Candidate Dombrowski.
I want to take this moment to reiterate that I am not supported by the Teachers Union. I don't have a hundred teachers going out door-to-door putting flyers on there. If the Teachers Union slate is elected, they'll replace seven board members on the D-211 Board. The community voice will be silenced. From my perspective, what we need to focus on is the environment in the building and the classroom. That starts with respect. It carries through on safety. We can't have our students disrespecting our teachers, getting into fights, and not have the administrators effectively executing discipline. If there are no consequences for actions and teachers are disrespected, and then the student is sent right back to the classroom after being addressed by an administrator, that does not resolve the issue. The teacher is in a hostile environment, and the discipline needs to be enforced above the level of the teacher. And that would be my focus and part of my vision for the next four years.
Thank you. Candidate Brands.
Well, I have a tremendous amount of respect for our teachers. They're frontline workers, and we need to provide them with the necessary resources to succeed. Last year, I had some really amazing teachers who are great people, and they care about the students, so I want to help our teachers. And I am not endorsed by the Teachers Union, but I do support our teachers.
Thank you. Candidate Kettle has a 30-second rebuttal.
So I'm not using this as a rebuttal, I'm using it as a follow-up. I think, speaking to this issue in particular, sometimes we're just not advertising the infrastructure that already exists. For example, there are programs here in the state of Illinois where you can get almost the entirety of your college education paid for if you major in special education and remain in the profession for a set number of years once you graduate. And I think programs like that, especially acknowledging that college is very unaffordable financially for a lot of us, most of us at this point, we need to advertise programs like that and give ourselves more teachers.
Thank you. And candidate Rosenblum, 30 seconds.
So I couldn't help myself on recruiting. So some other things to take in mind, some people have mentioned what we have in our schools. Pay is important, and when we're deciding pay for our teachers, we do take other school districts in the area into consideration to make sure that we're competitive. I also agree that we need to make sure that we're providing emotional and mental support for our staff as we do our students because they're going through a lot of the same issues that our students have been for the last couple of years. And finally, safety, making sure that teachers feel that coming in our building gives them a safe place to work.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for one more question, which we will begin with candidate Kettle. And the final question is, considering the strong differences of opinion in the community about parental involvement in curriculum selection, how would you determine which voices should receive the most weight in considering what is age or grade appropriate? Candidate Kettle.
I think about this a lot, especially because voter participation needs elections, which is the most direct line that community members and parents have in communicating their preferences. Voter turnout is abysmally low, so it gives everybody permission to claim a majority, but it gives no one any evidence for such a majority, really, because the majority doesn't show up to vote. So I think about this a lot. I take in consideration all viewpoints, although you'll certainly hear the opposite from some people. I weigh things very heavily, and at the end of the day, you have to just execute your best judgment in accordance with the principles that you advertised when you ran for the board in the first place, so that you deliver on what you said you were going to deliver, and you do what you said you were going to do. And then at the end of the day, the people who show up in the ballot box will express approval or disapproval, and you'll find out that way. I just wish more of us showed up to vote and that someone on this board claimed a majority.
Thank you. Candidate Russell.
So I also believe in having the best judgment, hearing all sides, and then it is a final opinion, right? You have to look at all, think of the input. Having taught for many years in a community where it was often difficult to get in touch with parents during the day or sometimes in the evening because they worked two or three jobs, I understand how difficult it is, one, to get in touch with parents, but then maybe to get them out to vote also, which is equally, if not more, important. So I think that to make a decision, you have to listen to an entire community, however that may be, and not just listen to a small group.
Thank you. Candidate Cheryl.
Well, I think we've all heard the saying, "The squeaky wheel gets the grease," and, you know, I think we need to continue to listen to the lobbyists' group because sometimes they have great points. I also think that we need to seek out the quiet majority that are satisfied and don't necessarily need to feel to show up at board meetings or to vote, unfortunately. I think that we need to approach subjects in the way that we teach our kids. Go to the original source, figure out what the motivations of groups that are doing messaging, and try and make reasoned decisions, be conscious of your own biases. So really, I think, you know, when it comes down to it, you have to try and do the best that you can.
Thank you. Candidate Dwan.
It is the job of the board to hear each and every person in the community, students, parents, everybody, but ultimately, decisions need to be made on what is best for our children because we are all here, for, at least I understand that we are all here for our children, and our decision should be based on what is best for them and not for a special section of society or what small group of parents think. It should be for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Baron.
Thank you. I just want to touch on the previous question as well, some of the comments. It's important to make sure that we take a look at our discipline policies and not only just discipline our students and they face the consequences, but also giving them the essential tools they need because the root of the problem is not being fixed by giving a consequence, so making sure that we're equipping our teachers with mental health Thursday training, equipping our counselors with enough staff proportions with student caseloads, it's important as well. There's a fine line between parent involvement and parent control. I definitely am someone who very much would listen to all these factors in the community, and that includes businesses, parents, educators, so it's really important to get that community involvement for all community members, not just the ones that show up at board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Rosenblum.
So feedback from the community comes in many forms. It comes in emails, it comes in people coming to our board meetings, and it comes it comes in people coming to our board meetings, and it comes in meeting individually in groups with other people. In fact, on Monday evening, I'm meeting with a parent to talk about a specific student issue. So I know Mr. Dombrowski is very in tune with his neighbors. I represent everyone in our community, not just people who may have voted for me, but people who didn't vote for me, not just people who like me, but people who don't like me. I represent everyone and I'm very open to listening to everyone. And I don't want to say I have a voting door because that means you have to walk through it. If you would like me to reach out to other people and have those dialogues, I would be very welcoming to do that. And it's important that I have that information when making decisions as a board member because I do represent everyone and I want to have those educated decisions when I do sit at the board table and vote. Really, as was identified, our purpose is to make sure our students are getting the proper and best education possible, and that's my goal.
Thank you. Candidate Dombrowski.
I do agree with what Ms. Kettle said earlier about hypocrisy. I think when you tell the community something, you should follow through and deliver. If you tell the community you're not in favor of taking special interest groups, PAC money, or partisan money, that's what you should do. I think that when we hear this term "small group," I think it's confusing. I went through an education system where I was encouraged to ask questions and speak out because if you, as a person, had that question, the likelihood was half of the class probably has the same question. So speak up. So when you say that this small group of people that are outspoken don't represent the minority, I think that's in conflict with everything I learned going through, you know, all the way through to my master's degree over at UIC. My vision for parent communication is to increase the two-way open communication, have committees where parents can come in and have a dialogue, community members can come in and have a dialogue. If you don't have a child in the district and you want to talk about your taxes, we have a place and a forum for you to do that.
Thank you. Candidate Brandt.
So everyone, of course, has the First Amendment, right, freedom of speech. And in regards to some like parent groups, they are allowed to go to the board meetings and express their concerns. But when it starts to become individuals harassing and acting violently towards school board members, that's where I do cross the line. I'm very pro-student and pro-community and myself, that's who I'm always going to put first. If elected, we will have disagreements, but we are all here to help the students and make our community a way better place.
Thank you. Candidate Kramer.
Okay, let me address the evidence-based theory for school boards. I strongly support that. I'm a numbers guy. I've been trying that way to be an analyst. I want to throw some very stark statistics at you in a quick, short amount of time. Mr. Dombrowski is right, one, only one in two students are at or above standards based on the SAT. This is a stark number. One in three students in District 211 are below the poverty level. One in five students are chronically absent. We have a problem and we need to figure out how to work with that. And I think if the board focuses on this going forward, I think we can be more successful than having to address emotional subjects.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two candidates that have sent in statements. And the first statement is for candidate Susan Sam, which will be read by candidate Dombrowski. The statement is limited to two minutes. Oh, did I skip? I'm sorry.
John Cheryl Hux.
Yeah, that's every rebuttal.
I just wanted to address the SAT scores because I did a little digging into that and I think that you'll find that when you look at it by demographic, all except for Palatine High School, the differences between before the pandemic and after the pandemic were in line with all the other districts in the area. The other thing is that people don't realize, most schools went test optional and so that affected, that thrown off, that skewed the score. So those really aren't accurate reflections. My son didn't study for the test either.
Okay, thank you. And one more. Thirty seconds for candidate Kramer.
A rebut, a rebuttal, is that possible? The reality is, is the numbers I threw out is a starting point. That's where the analysis begins. The first thing we have to do as a board is to say, "We have a problem," and then go out and decide where that problem is and go out and fix it. If Palatine High School is singled out as being problematic, then let's use some of the money that we have and the resources to address that problem.
Okay, anyone else? All right, now candidate Dombrowski will read the statement, the two-minute limited statement for candidate Sam.
Thank you. To the respectful moderators and audience, thank you for allowing me to introduce myself through proxy. My name is Susan Sam. I am a multimedia teacher, mother of two D-211 students, and a community member of Schaumburg for over twenty-five years. I am running for the Board of Education to facilitate and monitor leadership so that the necessary resources are implemented in our schools and provide the best education for every student. The D-211 Board of Education focus should be on three things. The first being financial health. We should have fair taxation and not raise the tax levy on the community when we have a healthy and balanced financial budget and a sizable cushion of reserves. The second area of focus should be on developing stronger academic readiness among our students. We have a responsibility to evaluate the academic curriculum, identify unsuccessful practices, and collaborate with teachers, parents, and counselors through focus groups and strategize together. The third area that I believe is necessary for school District 211 to focus on is student health and wellness. Parents should be informed, involved, and included in their child's education. Please go to my website at samforD211@boe.com, for more specific details on each issue. I want to instill in you the confidence that I will proudly represent you as your District 211 board member. Thank you. Susan Al-Sam, candidate for D-211 Board of Education.
Thank you. And I have a statement that was submitted by candidate Barbara Velez, also limited to two minutes, which will be read by Kathy Cortez.
This statement is in Barbara Velez's words. Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Schaumburg Hoffman Estates Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta sorority for organizing this forum. Due to another commitment, I'm unable to participate in this important discussion, but I am grateful for the opportunity the organizers have provided to submit a brief statement about my candidacy for D-211 Board of Education. Born and raised in Puerto Rico, I moved to Illinois in 2007 and have been part of this community for the past eleven years. As a parent of a junior student in Schaumburg High School, I'm actively involved in committees both at the school and district level. Professionally, I have a BA in Operations Management. I currently work at the Schaumburg School District 54 with more than ten years of experience working with multilingual families. I decided to run for board member because I believe I can create apparent insight coupled with district-level experience, fresh eyes, and ideas that can contribute to this community, especially now with such a big influx of immigrant families moving to our district boundaries. I know my experience will be an asset on the board. My goal is to strengthen communication between parents and administration to enhance the support of families to navigate their high school experience successfully. I also want to ensure teachers and staff are supported and are given the necessary tools to connect with students and parents. My top three priorities are academic growth and career readiness, strong communication systems and transparency, responsible stewardship of district resources. I intend to ensure changes for the future are balanced, equitable, and student-centered. Thank you for your consideration.
I don't think you can rebut somebody's statement. Sorry. Okay, but you can include it in your closing statement, which we're starting now. So we're going to begin with our closing statements. Candidates, you will have one minute each. And we will begin with candidate Russell for the closing statements. Candidate Russell.
Thank you. I believe that District 211 needs to be fiscally responsible, to a district that continues to attract the best and the brightest staff because it is a great place to work. A place where we listen to community and value the experience of our teachers and professional staff who are in the classrooms and the schools each and every day. A provider of world-class education for the students and a reason for people like you and me to want to live and work in our community. A great school district does all of these things. They are not mutually exclusive. I came from a district where at the back of the wall on the Board of Education meeting room was the phrase, "What's best for the kids." Isn't that why we're all here? What's best for the kids. Thanks for allowing me to come before you. I appreciate your time and your interest.
Thank you. Candidate Cheryl.
Well, I do find it quite unfortunate that Ms. Sam and Ms. Velez chose not to attend this nonpartisan event tonight because you can't really learn about people when you only attend friendly audiences. Meanwhile, they were able to appear on promoted by a radio show, as I'll describe, Culture Warrior a few days ago. But I'm asking you to vote for me because I'm qualified, I'm a moderate community member, and I want the best for what's our students and our school and our community. I pledge to be level-headed, civil, and to open to all ideas from all community members, allowed and required. You can rest assured, I'm not influenced by or funded by any outside groups from either the right or the left. Schools unfortunately become ground zero in culture proxy wars, and our kids deserve better. Let's not feed the culture wars that only serve to divide our community and drive the people out of the education profession in our schools. Let's be a welcoming community that helps our students recover what they lost over the last few years.
Thank you. Candidate Duman.
I want to take a moment to thank the organizers for hosting this event. As a candidate for District 211 School Board, I'm deeply committed to ensuring that every student in our district receives the highest quality of education. I believe that every child has the potential to succeed and as a community, it is our responsibility to support and nurture that potential. If elected, I will work tirelessly to promote equity and inclusion in our schools to ensure that every student feels safe, valued, and supported. I will also prioritize transparency and accountability, making sure that our district operates with integrity and openness. I'm running for District 211 School Board because I believe in the power of education to transform lives and communities. I'm excited about this opportunity to work with all of you to make our schools the best they can be. Thank you for your time and dedication.
Thank you. Candidate Barron.
Thank you to the organizations who put together this forum for us tonight and thank you for everybody in the audience for attending in person and then those who will be watching the recording as well. Thank you. I want to continue being fiscally responsible and making capital improvements necessarily in central for our students' learning environment to ensure that they get the best out of District 211 like I did. I also want to support, focus on supporting our students and faculty's wellness and safety. Their mental health is a huge crisis right now in our country and make sure that we have the best resources that we can give our students and our faculty as well as important. And finally, focus on community engagement. It is important for me to engage all these sectors in the community, including parents, students, business sectors, law enforcement as well. I appreciate your support and your vote on April 4th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Rosenblum.
Thank you again, everyone who came out this evening for the opportunity to meet with you and speak with you. As I mentioned, I'm running to retain my seat on the District 211 School Board to continue representing the entire community in a leadership position and keeping our district one of the best in the area through fiscal responsibility, educational program quality and availability, students and staff wellness and safety, supporting students in their preparation for careers and college, and community communication, engagement, support, transparency. We certainly covered many topics tonight and I welcome contact for you to further discuss district topics at your leisure. I'm dedicated to listening and serving all residents in the district and believe I'm the best candidate to continue to do so. As a fellow taxpayer resident community member, I ask and thank you for your vote. So I encourage you to please check out my website at stevenrosenblum.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Dombrowski.
Thank you, everyone, for hosting this forum tonight. Over the prior two terms, I have accomplished improvements in transparency. D-211 meetings are video-recorded and broadcast. The Budget and Finance Committee was open to the public for six years. I've accomplished improvements in our finances. IMF liability was eliminated and the district is in a sixty-three million dollar asset position. Bonds were retired, unused land was sold, and reserves have been reduced from seventy-four percent to fifty-four percent. I successfully participated in the support staff contract negotiations as the Board of Education member. My vision after this election includes improving academic performance, communication, safety, and respect in our schools. But me and like-minded neighbors on the board, in my 2027, we can celebrate the accomplishments of that vision.
Thank you. Candidate Brandt.
Once again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. To close this off tonight, I would like to say, this April 4th, you get four votes and I'm only asking for one vote. I'm super excited and proud that young people in our community will pass their first-ever vote for me. That is because I'm a hard-working student who has started a movement with our community and I am truly the only nonpartisan candidate in this race because I haven't had a lifetime to make up my mind. Something's funny. I will bring my business and negotiation skills to the board table. If elected, I will become the youngest elected official in Illinois. Help me make history and bring a fresh, positive perspective to our district that will bring transparency and accountability back to our board. A vote for Brandt is a vote for the connection to the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kramer.
Okay, wow, what a format. Did we cover a lot of ground. I know that there's a lot more ground that I think we could have covered, but we didn't have the time. I would ask everybody in this room to look at three sources that I quoted. One of them is called Panorama. That's a survey that the district paid six figures for. It's an internal survey, not generally available to the public, but if you want the information on what the results are, FOIA the administration. What you'll find out is that the survey showed that only fifty-eight percent of our students, and this is a survey that goes to students, believe that they have fitting emotional regulation. Another disturbing fact is a fact that is part of the Illinois State School Board Report Card, which I alluded to earlier, is that, this is put on by the University of Chicago. There are two things that come out of it. There's a concern with effective leadership and there is a concern with supporting environment, which really means safety.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Kettle.
Thank you again to the organizers. I'm going to address the elephant in the room, New Hope Community Church, and their preferred candidates desperately want me off this board because I'm very effective, because I read my board documents and come to every meeting very prepared, because I routinely bring chaotic and unproductive board conversations back to practical matters using good common sense, and because I strongly resist any attempt to further politicize this district, this board, and most importantly, our students. They cannot intimidate me, they can't shame me, and so they double down on conspiracy theories and cheap shots while I remain laser-focused on making sure District 211 provides a challenging, robust education to every kid that walks through our door, no matter who they are or what their family believes. And if my unwavering commitment to that principle makes me unpopular with New Hope Community Church and whatever candidates they prefer, it's a price willingly pay in my second term.
Thank you. As we bring this forum to a close, I want to thank the candidates for their participation. We would like to encourage all our candidates to recycle their campaign signs. Members of the public can do so as well. Please visit the LWV Palatine Area website at www.lwvpalatinearea.org for details. If you are not a registered voter, you can find registration information on our website as well. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, Delta Sigma Theta, and the Schaumburg Library, thank you all for coming and don't forget to subscribe to our channel. thank you all for coming, and don't forget, early voting begins on March 20th. There's plenty of election information available on the League of Women Voters website. Please participate in our democracy by casting your ballot. Your vote is your voice. Thank you.[1788.86][1788.86]